Rattleoni's Hardware and Garden Stores brings you Garage Logic Podcast number 997, I think, January 10th, 2022. And I've lost the sheet with the records on it. It was really, it was in the high 40s on some day in one year in January, and it was way below zero, probably back in the old days.
Oh, my God.
And now from the mayor's office above the boathouse on the east shore of Spoon Lake, it's Garage Logic.
She was hot.
With Chris Reivers manning technology corner, Kenny Olson from the Krabby Coffee Shop, John Height in the newsroom, and of course, the rookie. Here is your flashlight king, fireworks commissioner, and the keeper of common sense, your mayor, Joe Souchere.
Scott Matura out in Montana, whose pronouns are mountain and mountainous, writes, "God only knows how many miscounted shows since show one. Let's just assume that show number 1,000 is sometime this winter."
Perfect, perfect.
That's a good point.
No, this is 997. And if I got one, I got 15 emails on graphic novels. We noted yesterday that Hennepin County Attorney Mary Moriarity took her oath of office on a graphic novel by John Lewis.
Oh, really?
Yes, John?
I thought it was a congressman who took his... Okay, never mind. I didn't know that's why you guys brought it up.
No, it was Mary Moriarity. And it turns out that a graphic novel has nothing to do with sexual content or violence necessarily. They're glorified comic books.
They're, yes, I, yeah. I heard, I got an email from a guy who said, "What's wrong with those idiots on the show?" Because I wasn't on the show yesterday.
Chris writes, "It's a marketing term that allows publishers to charge top dollar amounts for what essentially are comic books. The John Lewis series sounds like it's pretty good, but that's just what happened." The Hennepin County prosecutor took her oath on a comic book. And Jeff writes, "For the love of the literary gods, it's just a fancy comic book," which even makes it more appropriate for that clown show to use for a swearing in. "I'm surprised dummy number one and two didn't know this, as it's likely the only type of novel they would read."
Wait a minute, I'm offended now. I have some graphic novels.
Well, you'd be the only one here that would. I've never read one, and I didn't, I guess I didn't understand the term.
Mouse. You guys have heard of mouse? M-A-U-S? Art Spiegelman?
No, I haven't, John, I haven't.
Wow, okay.
Boy, am I uneducated.
You gotta get out more.
Yeah. Bert writes, "As I understand it, a graphic novel is essentially a picture book with text. That is a novel with illustrations. Comic books. The streaming, that this steaming pile of Hamlin BS makes me wonder about something." Well, this is a great point. Where are the students' sense of curiosity? When I was a 19-year-old student and someone said we were about to encounter something offensive, I was all in.
Right.
The forbidden stuff. I suspect this crosses religious lines. Reminds me of the old saw about studying Chaucer. As the professor is handing out the syllabus, she said, "Here is your list of readings for the Canterbury Tales segment. Do not deviate. In particular, do not read The Miller's Tale." The following Monday, the pop-up quiz exclusively was about The Miller's Tale, and everybody did well. It's clear academia in its current state does not understand education. No, they don't. Isn't that a great point? These kids sit there like little dumbed-down sheep, and they don't wonder what all the fuss is about? Man.
It's crazy.
A failed academy has even driven curiosity out of their minds.
But you think that they had that to begin with, and I don't think they ever did. Curiosity, right?
I guess not. I notice a tremendous lack of curiosity in the people I encounter on a daily basis.
Hey!
And I'm including you.
Oh, my.
How many shootings in Minneapolis the past couple of days?
See, we had four last night.
Are we counting, are we counting events or individual shots fired?
Let's count them both.
Because you hit, well, can you count south?
Four last night.
That was in Edina.
Well, I only note this because you had five people injured in two separate incidents in the Uptown neighborhood last night, according to the coppers. The first incident happened around 5:20 PM Monday. Police say officers responded to a report of a shooting and found a man with at least one apparent non-life-threatening gunshot wound on the 1400 block of West Lake Street. Police say preliminary information suggests the man was shot near his vehicle in an alley off the 2900 block of Hennepin Avenue South. Vehicles were shot from another vehicle that was also in the, I'm sorry, shots were fired from another vehicle that was also in the alley. No one was arrested. They're investigating. A second incident happened around 8:20 PM near Lake Street East and 22nd Avenue South, according to Minneapolis Police. Metro Transit Police heard gunfire in the area and identified four victims. I only mention this because do you know that after 52 years, the Minneapolis, or I'm sorry, the Minnesota Sportsman Show will not be coming to the Twin Cities?
I saw that.
It's ending at St. Paul's show after 52 years, because they say it's too dangerous to go to the city. Isn't that something?
It's not surprising.
The show was held at the River Center in downtown St. Paul. This year's show was supposed to be Jan. 12 through the 15. That's this weekend. The St. Paul RV Super Show will be held during that timeframe at River Center instead. The post goes on to say that inventory from boat and dock makes it difficult to have multiple shows, and that some resort owners will not come to St. Paul due to fear of crime, adding that people attending the show also have crime concerns. The family behind the show, the Sineko family, thanked everyone for all the support over the decades. The owners do say that other sportsman shows are still happening in St. Cloud, Red River Valley, the Sioux Empire Sportsman Show, and the Red River Valley Boat and Marine Product Show, but no, no show in St. Paul, and due in large part to a fear of crime by both the people who put on the show and those who attended.
Who wish to attend, yeah. And he also, I believe, said that this is going on all over the country, the closer you get to the country's tallest buildings.
The nightly news tonight will be led by the flooding in California, the mudslides and what have you. Yes, they're getting torrential rains. Just because that's me, I looked up the Sense Winds, although I'm the first to admit that if you've got a tree in your kitchen right now, you probably don't really care about the Sense Winds, or if you just watch your Hyundai float by, you probably don't care about the Sense Winds. But they, they go, they go way back. They go back to 1800. In fact, the earliest recorded history indicates, geological evidence indicates mega floods occurred in California in the following years, AD. 212, 440, 603, 1029, 1300, and then post-Christ, 1300, 1418, 1605, 1750. Prior to European settlement, these early floods, of course, predominantly affected the indigenous peoples of California. And listen to this one. "In 1605, present-day California was subject to massive flooding due to, due to an unusually powerful atmospheric river. This was potentially the largest flooding event of the prior 2,000 years in 1605."
Wow.
Then in 1825, we had a flood that changed the course of the Los Angeles River from its western outlet into Santa Monica Bay, following the course of Bologna Creek to a southern outlet at San Pedro Bay, near where it is today. And it goes on to tell about horrific floods in 1850, in the years following 1850. And I can bring it right up to the present, and I won't. As I say, this will have no impact on newscasters. This will have no impact on a fairly inattentive public. And to be fair, I suppose you're not interested if you've got a tree in your living room or your house just washed away. So one of the major differences, of course, between today and a flood so serious that it was the worst flood of 2,000 years in 1605, the difference is that California is heavily, heavily populated, and people have built homes on hillsides. Other than that, there'd be no difference in the flooding that what is now known as California has experienced through the millennia. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
But that's not what you'll hear tonight.
No.
And that's not what I heard today, having lunch, listening to CNN. These are all driven by climate change. Well, okay, then, as I say, the climate has always changed, and it was changing 2,000 years ago.
To the point where the newscast I saw on this this morning had that story, then it followed it up with, California is still, despite the record rain, is still going through drought.
Yeah, and I grant you, it's a tough way to get over your drought, but they're getting over it.
Right.
The reservoirs are filling.
You don't want it all at once, is what you're saying.
It's a tough way to do it, but there's nothing new about it. Nothing.
Nothing.
And David Muir tonight will have his bush jacket on and be standing near a flooded stream for ABC, and he'll be telling you that climate change is wreaking havoc.
And this is a once-in-a-lifetime.
Once-in-a-lifetime, and you can, they were saying that in 1605, so you can take that for what it's worth. I couldn't find the audio, but I have a story of our president, our President Joe Biden. I guess, John, do you have in your news that some documents have been found in his?
I do, yes.
Yeah. But there's another story.
So we raided his house then, right?
No, they were in some office.
Old office that he used between.
I couldn't help it.
Or he pretended to have a think tank.
I see.
Biden was caught on camera. He visited the US Mexican border for the first time over the weekend, and he was in El Paso. And he spoke with members of the Border Patrol, and he walked along the wall separating Texas from Mexico, and he visited a migrants' center. And of course, he had people with him steering him along and saying, "Sir, here's this and here's that." As the president walked in at the migrants' center, a woman said to him, "And sir, here we have the folks from Salvation Army." And at which point Biden walked up to one of the uniformed men, standing there, and shook his hand, and then began telling this fellow how he too had spent a lot of time with the Secret Service in Poland and Ukraine. "No, no, Joe, that, that's the Salvation Army guy. He was, he's there to help the migrants." "I spent time with the Secret Service in Poland and Ukraine," the president said. And they had to walk him away there and say, "Sir, that's, that's the Salvation Army."
Guy's biting his lip.
I shouldn't laugh. It really isn't funny, is it?
No, like I said before, it's, it's sad.
I know that you poo-pooed it, and I'll just mention it in passing, because we don't have a sports segment today. But what the hell was it? That was a college championship game? That was the Vikings playing Highland Catholic 6th grade? That was ridiculous.
It was a mismatch, you're right.
Well, how did TCU get to the title game?
Well, you know what? It's a funny game, Joe.
That, that wasn't enjoyable. That wasn't entertaining. It was ridiculous.
I shut her down about halftime. I said, "Yeah."
Yep, same here.
Yeah. Well, I did too, because Aliens was on last night with a new episode. And if you don't think that, if you think we're alone in the universe.
You got another thing coming?
There's too many credible people now, no longer afraid to be called a nutcase. There's too many credible people weighing in on the, let's put it this way. You're all familiar with the Pentagon Improved Released Videos.
Sure.
Of the Navy releasing video of the unidentified craft they encountered off San Diego in 2015. They were acorn-shaped, and they, they could maneuver in ways that we cannot comprehend. And you're hearing the Navy pilots saying, "What in the world is this? Holy cow," you know, on and on and on. And then, as, as the Aliens show does, they often go back, you know, 10,000 years before Christ, or pick a date, anytime, and they find, they find the hieroglyphics and the carvings on walls all over the world, in Peru and Egypt, and, and they're acorn-shaped craft that were here 10,000 years ago. There's no denying the uncanny aspect of this.
All of the great mysteries of the world can be answered by that one thing, aliens. Aliens.
It's just wonderful. I don't care what people think of me, and I poo-pooed in my own house when I watch it, and I say, "This is real. You gotta watch this."
You gotta check this out.
This is really, really cool. And I don't understand for the life of me why the government has been so hesitant and so frightened to have us know this. What I learn every day about Washington frightens me enough. I don't need, I'm not gonna be frightened by the discovery of the fact that, you know, these are either time travelers or people from a different universe or whatever. I think that's cool.
What you don't know, you don't know now, but you will come to believe as the years go by, is the reason Kennedy was killed was because of his inquiries into aliens and what they had been doing on Earth.
You're getting me off the nonsense now.
That is absolutely fact, Joe.
No, you're crazy.
And it was on that.
What kind of lure did he just throw into the pond?
Shut your mouth for a second. It was on ancient aliens that I learned this, okay?
Well, that, they, they do have some, a great deal of theatrical license.
Do you think their credibility, credibility could be raised just a little bit if that dude would do something about his hair?
Yes.
Seriously.
The Greek guy?
Just get a haircut, buddy.
The Greek guy, yeah.
And he'll be taken a lot more seriously.
But man, it's fun, because I'm absolutely convinced that obviously something is taking place.
To the point where, and I'm being serious, to the point where you think that there might even be alien life roaming amongst us on this earth?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
So Lee Harvey, Lee Harvey and his friends, Og and Blob, they, they took care of Kennedy? Is that what you're saying?
I don't subscribe to that. I don't know anything about that. All I'm telling you is.
Don't make stuff up here.
With each passing week, the show on the History Channel called The Aliens, which once could have easily been dismissed as balderdash, takes on ever-increasing credibility with the people coming forward to corroborate what they're talking about. Physicists, politicians, Pentagon officials, Navy pilots, on and on and on and on and on.
And the aliens are roaming amongst us.
Imagine a future, the freight trucks.
I mean, you got the President of the United States going up to a Salvation Army guy, talking to him about the Secret Service. Whatever Washington can throw at me is not nearly as frightening as what we're experiencing on a daily basis. I, I would love to know. Why not know? Aren't we here to learn and, well, not at Hamlin, but aren't we here to learn and, and explore?
What a tie all together.
Well, I can bring subjects together, can't I?
You really can. A master.
So I see the Star Tribune. Star Tribune finally picked up on the story. We've been on for a week now.
Yeah, I saw it.
They usually wait for the Daily Mail to put something up online.
I thought the Star Tribune had something a few days ago. I know the St. Paul paper did.
But this one was glaring headlines at the top of the page.
But a couple of new points. Bert raised a great point. "Where's your curiosity, kids? You got a teacher telling you what I'm about to show you can be very upsetting to Muslim students. Kids, you, you may leave the classroom if you, if you..." And this, this liar who's bringing the, who brought the case, she's lying and said she didn't have enough time to, she's lying based on what the teacher says. It's just a, it's just a, it's just a shame that it used to be a, it's a place called Hamlin. It used to be a school. It's not a school anymore.
My perception on the student was that she wasn't paying attention, because she was given fair warning. And then, at the last minute, she finally tuned in and realized what was happening, and then looked and saw the images that were on her computer screen.
And did you note that that was a course she had to take to fulfill some sort of diversity and inclusive aspect of her curriculum? What the hell kind of degrees are these people getting? We know the academy has failed, but you're piling on top of that a degree that's gonna not get you a job. Downing notes, "The news out of Hamlin takes me back four decades, when I was an offended college student. While attending the University of Minnesota-Duluth, I had a history class on ancient civilizations. Many of the civilizations discussed in this class were recognized, were recognizable to those of us raised in the church as people and places from the Old Testament. The professor made sport of this, mocking the biblical accounts and even entertaining himself with his impersonation of Charlton Heston playing Moses in the Ten Commandments. As a Christian, I was offended. I felt unwelcome. But did I complain to the administration? Of course not. I put on my big-boy pants, told myself not everyone thought like me, and reminded myself that I should expect to be exposed to diverse views while in the pursuit of a higher education. And can you imagine what would have happened if I had complained? Would the professor have been fired? Would the university have apologized? Of course not. I would have been made out to be the bad guy, trying to impose religion on everyone else. We would have heard about the separation of church and state, and that we don't live in a theocracy. I might have been called a Jerry Falwell wannabe, while accompanying condemnation of the moral majority. Is within this context my own lived experience that I find myself aghast at the way that Hamlin is so eagerly, so proudly even, surrendered to religious fundamentalists. How times have changed. Isn't progress wonderful? David Downing." I can't ever recall being offended by anything in my years in school. I just, it just never, either I never was offended, or it never occurred to me to be offended. I just can't come up with anything. I just can't come up with anything.
I've always been delighted at offensive stuff. I don't, maybe that's just me.
Well, that's not a bad attitude when you're in an institution of higher learning.
Yeah.
Why don't we take a short timeout?
Hey, GLers, it's Reivers here, and you've heard me talk about my relationship with Josh Arnold for quite some time now. And the reason I advocate that you give Josh a call is simple. Well, actually, it's two reasons: trust and results. Josh has seen it all when it comes to economic and market conditions. As he says, "Past results do not guarantee future returns." Well, that is true. Josh can make sure that your retirement objectives match your investments. And you can trust Josh to make sure that you are not paying more in fees than you are selling in returns. Yes, that is more common than you would think. So do yourself a favor by booking a 48-minute free, yes, free consultation that has absolutely no obligation. Call Josh today at 952-925-5608. That number once again is 952-925-5608. You will be glad you did.
Investment services offered by Josh Arnold Investment Consultant LLC, a security investment advisor. Past performance is no guarantee of future results. All investments involve risk. All comments and opinions are Josh Arnold's and do not constitute investment advice.
Chris Reivers is a paid endorser.
See, I just, I can't do it. I can't do it like him.
It's the end of the world as we know it, and he feels fine. Joe Souchere.
Don't rush, Reivers. I was waiting for that. It's the, the big winter whiteout sale. Rich at Maple Grove Lock &amp; Safe. Making sure it'll be a white January with a big sale on Centurion, USA and Colonial safes from Liberty Safes. How much, you ask? Hold on, hold on. First, let's talk Liberty Safe facts. Made in the USA, transferable lifetime warranties, best fire protection in the business, and professional delivery and installation always available. Okay, here's the numbers. You really should write this down. It's pretty good. $300. Save $300 on the Centurion 24. Save $329 on the USA 36. And a whopping $795 of savings on the Colonial 50 during the winter whiteout sale in January at Maple Grove Lock &amp; Safe. All of the above-mentioned safes, white gloss, hence winter whiteout. Get it? Yeah, white gloss. Anyway, hook up with Rich. He's the owner, Maple Grove Lock &amp; Safe, 6901 East Fish Lake Road, and save up to $795. You can see all of the details at maplegrovelockandsafe.com.
I have a note from an insider in the failed academy who does not want his name used, but offered a name I could use, and I won't even do that, because this guy's emailed before. So I trust the email, but I think the name he's offering would even help someone discover him.
Is it Rick?
"My employment depends on my anonymity. If you decide to read this one, blank works. If you'd like a suggestion, well, I'm not going to." "You've appreciated a couple of my past emails enough to read them on the show. I'm happy to contribute to the conversation as a garage logician and citizen of Gumption County. I'm trying to catch up on last week's podcast, so you may have discussed this already. I love the show and miss you guys when I can't listen. I really appreciate the discussions and thinking all of you have, and feel less alone when working at the failed, in the failed academy's belly. I sure hope you'll continue until I retire. I need you for my survival."
So do we.
The link below is a valuable read. It's a case study of sorts when it comes to the DEI movement, diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is the religion of the failed academy. Just so you know, this isn't something new. It's been growing for the entire 20-plus years I've been working within the system. George Floyd's death was leveraged like nothing else for the DEI movement. It solidified many groups, inspired the courageous liberal fringe, and provided the impetus for changes that reflect significant marginalization of students and faculty who are considered white, especially those who are male, Christian, and heterosexual. Census reports show that this population of students and newly hired college faculty are currently bottoming out. I have colleagues who clap and cheer when they hear about it. As a white, Christian, able-bodied, and heterosexual male, I am not invited or allowed to speak in meetings, participate in promotion opportunities, and marginalized from all circles of influence. As you can imagine, I've been successful playing the game of helping students recognize their checkbox indicators don't define them, but I'm losing ground making institutional impacts. Thankfully, I still have students thanking me for making them think rather than telling them what to think, as most professors in the system do. It's so sad to see the failed academy as now about indoctrination rather than thinking. A ray of hope you might share. This year, I have more students who check all sorts of boxes, historically marginalized, like students of color, LGBTQ+ etc. Taking my classes specifically, they self-report this in class surveys, because they know they are expected to carry their load, think for themselves, support their thinking with rational, non-emotional structures, and support their classmates as people, students, and all students. Indicate that my classes were recommended by students I've had in the past. Some students are still choosing to operate in the same, in the sane world. Good luck." And then here's the link to the article. TheFP.com/p/HowDEIIsSupplantingTheTruth. TheFP.com/p/HowDEIIsSupplantingTheTruth. And it'll just be another clue as to the success the failed academy has in completely failing this country.
You can just Google "DEI is supplanting the truth," and that website comes up instantly.
There it is. It's, it's just more, more evidence we have that the failed academy is really at the root of, of all of this, and...
It also has the stock market scroll across the top.
Does it?
Yeah.
Funny, this reminds me of something I saved a long time ago. Let me click on it now. Oh, it's also from the Free Press.
Yeah.
What a coincidence. Called Hollywood's New Rules. And that's also, it's from Janu- actually, a year ago, January 11, 2022.
I remember that piece, yeah.
And that's also a fascinating piece about how confused Hollywood is right now.
Right. There's a piece on the front page of today's Star Tribune, and it's just to point something out for us. Lisa Goodman, a Minneapolis City Councilwoman, is going to retire at the end of her term. And she represents the Lake of the Isles area and Uptown, and some, some prosperous areas. And didn't we have her on the air 100 years ago? And didn't we have her on the air 100 years ago?
I know we've had her on before. She was a very pleasant guest and she listened to your ideas. It was not a fight. It was a, I don't remember the reason you had her on, but she did bring some common sense to the Minneapolis City Council.
I'm not going to dwell on it. I just found it enjoyable to read about her as an example of something we've always contended. The left as we used to know them is just not left enough. And that would apply to Lisa Goodman. She's not, she's not nuts enough. She's a liberal from the era of the late US Senator Wellstone, for whom she worked in 1990. She represents an older guard on today's city council, which has moved to her left in recent years. She's clearly not left enough. She has repeatedly won reelection to her seat representing the 7th Ward, which stretches from the western parts of downtown to the Brinmore, Kenwood and Cedar Isles Dean neighborhoods. But in recent years, she found herself among a relatively moderate group on the council and occasionally accused of being a conservative.
Accused.
Accused of being conservative, representing the city's most privileged neighborhoods. Following the murder of George Floyd in 2020, Goodman was among a minority of council members who refused to sign a pledge to begin the process of ending the Minneapolis Police Department. See, she's left, but she wasn't left enough. Being labeled conservative something Goodman greets with a chuckle of incredulity. "I was the lefty that people in my neighborhood were afraid of," she said, referring to when she first took office in 1998. "Some viewed me as too left-leaning when I first ran." For example, she said, she opposed the city's approval of US Bank Stadium for the Minnesota Vikings, a project she still describes as corporate welfare. Although I probably have become a bit more moderate over the years, I feel like I have stood still and the world has changed around me. Man, that's the way we all feel, Lisa. In an announcement emailed to constituents, Goodman wrote, "When I first took office in 1998, Minneapolis was a very different city than it is today." Listing dark moments like the I-35W bridge collapse and the murder of Floyd alongside positive changes such as downtown growth and the creation of an affordable housing trust fund. And she goes on to say that the level of discourse is intense and she's just not, she's just not left enough anymore. But she used to get along with people and found that that was possible. If I'm reading between the lines, I would suggest she no longer finds that possible. And she's served enough and she's going to move on now. She's going to move on.
Isn't that sad that she's not, you know, again, I go back to when Senator Wellstone would come on with you and it's the Tip O'Neill Reagan thing. They could disagree, but they didn't hate each other. Now it's just hate.
But you know, 1998 to me, isn't that long ago.
No.
And, and she was feared as being just this crackpot leftist by the people that she represents. I don't know why she got elected, but they, they elected her and then she grew to understand that she just clearly isn't as left as this current group of crackpots they have in office. You know, she's almost a GLer by comparison. I think she was a motorcyclist, Rook. I have a feeling that she was a motorcyclist.
Wouldn't you say in the neighborhoods that she represents, the wallets are a little bit thicker, the bank accounts a little bit deeper?
Yep.
Yeah.
The gunshots a little bit louder?
Which means she probably attends to the needs and concerns of a lot of conservatives over there.
Which is what she was entrusted to do.
Which means she was able to get along with both sides, which in today's world is unacceptable.
Why don't you, we've got a year to book her. We've got a year to have her on.
I think so.
I mean, she's going to fulfill her term, but I'm just, I'm just fascinated. She, she represents a couple of things we said. One, the left is no longer left enough. Hell, Fry isn't left enough for these fruitcakes. And then B, whoever replaces her will have us longing for Lisa Goodman.
Right. Even though we already do.
Yeah.
Without her being gone.
Really a lot to cover today, boys and girls. We have a rape case dismissed in Minneapolis by the new Hennepin County Attorney, Mary Moriarity. I'm finding it a very difficult story to understand. Is it, did anybody read it?
Sure did.
I did, yeah.
I read a couple of versions of it and.
You mean day one of Mary?
I think this is her first deal.
We can blame her directly.
Yeah, I, I said, this is a difficult story to understand. Somebody named Marco Tulio Rivera Enemorado, 35 years old, was accused of first degree criminal sexual conduct for allegedly raping a 14-year-old girl in June of 2019. Four days into his trial, newly-elected Hennepin County Attorney Mary Moriarity dismissed the case because a veteran prosecutor, Catherine McEnroe, admitted to lying to the court. What that amounts to is that a note got passed with the word venue, question mark, to remind the witness that this occurred in Hennepin County. And apparently McEnroe said that the note had nothing to do with venue. It had to do with something else. And then a series of technicalities ensues and Moriarity dismissed the case and the guy's free. Does anyone, can anyone contribute to this who also read the story?
Fire the, fire Catherine McEnroe. Fire her. She shouldn't have had a job after that occurrence.
Yeah, she now has a lawyer. She's lawyered up.
Yeah, well, you don't lie in court, especially when you're on the prosecution side. You don't do that.
Because what this cost society, however, however, a venial sin this might have been, it cost society an alleged rapist back out on the street.
Yeah. And he cannot be retried.
Can't be retried for this crime.
Right.
So this young lady will not get justice.
Well, just wait a month, you'll have him for something else, I say with devastation.
But the note being passed, I don't understand why this entire, why this entire case can just be thrown out because of that. I'm having a hard time understanding that part of it.
We've got bad laws if that, if that.
Well, let's see if we can figure it out.
The great, or not great, that's the wrong word. The interesting thing is the passing of the note from what I'm seeing was not a violation. But the judge asked the prosecutor, the prosecutor lied.
It was Cahill, by the way, that was the judge.
Yeah.
Correct.
Hennepin County Judge Peter Cahill presided over the trial. Moriarity said that Cahill questioned a victim advocate from Moriarity's office who passed a note to McEnroe during trial on Friday when the alleged victim was testifying with her mother in the courtroom. Okay, let's, let's, let's even get that straight. On the stand is a victim advocate from Moriarity's office. The victim advocate passed a note to McEnroe, the prosecutor. Am I right so far? The victim advocate, advocate passed a note to McEnroe during the trial on Friday when the alleged victim was, so, so the victim advocate was not on stand.
Correct.
No, the victim was.
The victim was on the stand and the victim advocate passed a note to the prosecutor, McEnroe, on which the word venue, question mark, was written. The initial note said venue, question mark, which Moriarity said was a reminder for the prosecutor to establish that the alleged crime occurred in Hennepin County. While the note was not a violation and was not inappropriate in any way, the prosecutor lied to Cahill about its content, Moriarity said.
So he said, hey, what is this, what's on here?
Supervisors in the Hennepin County Attorney's Office were made aware of this after speaking to the victim advocate and Moriarity was notified immediately, she said. In a short hearing under questioning by Cahill, Moriarity said McEnroe admitted to having intentionally lied about, intentionally lied to the court. Instead of telling Cahill the note was a venue reminder, Moriarity said that McEnroe told Cahill the note was instead a reminder to pronounce a name correctly. But Moriarity said that McEnroe then allegedly had the victim advocate change the note confirming the lie she told the court. So is it consequent, so it was inconsequential. She just needed to say, Judge, the victim witness advocate was reminding me to establish a basic element of the offense. Here's the note and that would put an end to it. So what we don't know is why, why McEnroe thought that was so problematic, she should change the word. Yes, you in the back?
Have any of the four of you ever heard of something like this in court before?
No.
Cause I hadn't either, but I wanted to make sure that any of you guys had, that this wasn't some type of routine practice. Here's my point. If on day one, and we were warned about Mary Moriarity getting this position to begin with, if she is so instantly going to side with the criminal in this case, what, what next, what's next for this city?
I think you're premature in your indictment of Moriarity.
I can't join you on that one, Chris. As much as I dislike her, believe me, I'm not a fan.
You're wanting to leap to the conclusion that Moriarity saw a chance to spring a bad guy.
Right.
And I don't think.
But that's what her whole campaign was based upon.
Let's just take this case.
That justifies your feeling that way.
Right. But that isn't, that isn't fair to Moriarity. We don't know. In fact, she is insisting that I want complete transparency and it's completely transparent for her to have called this out. And what to me, more interesting than that is, and I don't know that we'd ever get an answer, why would McEnroe do such a thing? It doesn't sound like that big of a deal.
And I'm guessing that that's why this particular attorney didn't think it was that big of a deal, but here's my point.
No, no, stop. No, you must stop.
It was a big deal because McEnroe made the woman change the note.
Yeah. So why did McEnroe think that was a big deal?
Huge deal, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah, and Moriarity didn't turn her in. Like Joe Redd, he went through the paragraph really quick. It's kind of a throwaway paragraph, but they found out because supervisors in the Hennepin County Attorney's Office were made aware after speaking to the victim advocate who told the truth.
And then Moriarity was notified.
Exactly. Yeah. It's, yeah.
So it's, Reivers is correct emotionally. It's, it's fascinating. It's fascinating that this happens under the new Hennepin County Attorney's watch. But what happened isn't some machination by Moriarity.
We don't think.
No, no, you can't even say that. You can't even say that.
We're waiting for that. But it is, isn't it an interesting coincidence, coincidence that this happened first time out of the gates?
It was also not her first day, Chris. She's been in office already over a week.
Okay.
Well, they just, what was, when was the story though, that when she was sworn in?
She was sworn in last week, the 3rd, January 3rd.
On the comic book.
It's a graphic novel.
Archie Jughead.
Yeah, she had a Jughead.
It was written by John Lewis.
Nancy and Sluggo.
John Lewis, the congressman, wrote the graphic.
Archie has a date with Betty and Veronica.
It's fascinating news that must be read terribly carefully.
Yeah. It's a messy story. But the bad guy is out.
The bad guy's out and the girl is not going to get justice in her rape case.
And Moriarity, Moriarity indicates that she regrets that and you have to take her for her word. You have to take her for her word that because of this faux pas, the victim will not have justice. I'm going to take her for her word. There's nowhere else I can go with that.
This is also, it was also, I don't know if you guys read about the background, a family situation, which makes it even stranger, the rape case was. So you wonder about that dynamic, or I do anyway, maybe it's not part of the case.
Wait a minute, so the victim and the accused?
The 35-year-old guy was a cousin, or 14 years. They were cousins and when her family left the house, he walked into her room.
Allegedly.
Allegedly raped her, no.
But nobody's answered my question, how come McEnroe is still, why does she still punch in every morning?
Oh wait, the guy was still convicted of it, right?
No, no.
No.
It's the trial to do that.
Yeah, that's what the trial was.
I don't know that McEnroe is still on the payroll.
I don't see anything about her dismissal.
I doubt that she'd ever come on with us, but boy, she'd be fascinating to question. Why, what, what was the big deal about changing the word venue from the pronunciation of a name?
No, her lawyer won't even let her talk to the paper. She's talking to us.
Moriarity says McEnroe is not handling, well, the involved prosecutor, who we found out later, was McEnroe was not now handling cases, but declined to say more, saying there's a pending personnel investigation.
For those of you listening around the world and in Europe and in other states, Mary Moriarity is famously anti-jail, anti-bail and whatever, and won the race for Hennepin County Attorney, which is why there would be such interest in this particular incident. But there's no, there's no reason for us to believe that Moriarity was pulling any nefarious strings here. Why don't we take a break and come back with John Height?
Ready, Joe?
Don't you dare compare me to that.
Yeah, let's go.
Van Halen on GL Podcast. He's a man who spends hours in high schools, sipping through the nuts and bolts of life.
Here's John Height.
Oh Kenny is going to wait.
Yeah.
Here's John Height in the newsroom.
Thank you very much.
We're arguing on the air, who should get the most coins in the scan bucket?
I think it's you.
Me or Joe?
Well, you guys got a long ways to catch up to me.
You know, my scan bucket is full. There's no more room for coin.
Oh, I'm Scrooge McDuck swimming in that stuff. I'm telling you right now.
In the news, as we hinted about earlier, Minneapolis police say one of the four people who were shot Monday night near a light rail stop is recovering from a potentially life-threatening injury. In an update provided this morning, police said of the four men who were shot, identified, of the four people, excuse me, who were shot, one had a potentially life-threatening gunshot wound. Three others identified as a man, a woman and a teenage girl who's about 17, all had an apparent non-life-threatening gunshot injury. All four being treated at Hennepin Healthcare. As of now, it was about 11 this morning when I wrote this story, no one has been arrested for the shooting, which happened around 8:30 in the area of East Lake Street and South 22nd Avenue. According to police, it was an altercation between two groups of people that happened. One of the groups left, moving toward an area bus stop. Officers say a second group fired shots before leaving the area in a vehicle. All of this comes less than 48 hours after four other people were injured during a shooting in downtown Minneapolis. At shooting about 3:30 in the morning Sunday near the intersection of Hennepin Avenue and North 9th Street.
Let's go down and go to the Sportsman Show.
Here we go.
Oh, wait, they canceled.
Nope. So I'm curious, do they tabulate ridership throughout the course of the year with these things? Cause I'd be interested to see.
There's no ridership.
Well, I'd be interested to see what the numbers are in the span of the last 12 months as opposed to 2019.
Every day I look out here when I come in.
There's never anybody.
Nobody on those trains. It's an entitlement program that costs a billion dollars. I was hoping for the Sportsman Show, believe it or not, I was going to go because I want to buy a fishing rod.
Really?
Yeah, I wanted to shop.
You're going to wet a line?
I wanted to comparison shop.
Sportsman Show to buy a fishing ball?
Well, I was going to look at them.
Kick some tires?
Yeah.
I think they still make those little fishing rods that have like Snoopy on them.
The Poopie Pocket Fisherman?
Yeah, those little, little ones, flowers and the like.
The line's about as thick as a jump rope.
Yeah, that's the kind I need.
A woman who was, police say was pregnant, died at the hospital after being found in Lakeville parking lot with a gunshot wound, according to a news release from the Lakeville Police. Family members identified the woman as 31-year-old Kyla O'Neal. Police say staff at the Hennepin County Medical Center were able to deliver the baby Sunday night. Condition of the baby not known at this time. The man believed to be involved in the shooting identified by police as 32-year-old Dante Rafael McCray from Minneapolis. He's being held at the Dakota County Jail on suspicion of second-degree manslaughter, but has not yet been formally charged. Police say that he has, in their words, employment affiliation at the Amazon facility where the woman was found. At Brooklyn Center's first city council meeting of the year, community members demanded answers from city leaders after backlash about a video created to recruit more police officers. That video, according to the city, has been taken down from its websites and social media pages. Includes moments where officers can be seen holstering guns and packing a rifle into squads. Monday night, community members voiced their concerns over the recruitment video, making it clear they didn't feel that's how the city should be enticing people to police the community. Michelle Gross is with Communities United Against Police Brutality. She said to council members and the mayor, April Graves, this video, the reasons we have concerns for it is it was hyper-militarized. It was filmed at night and very specifically, it was filmed in. It was filmed at night and very specifically it was filmed in a way to grab the attention to what I would call adrenaline junkies. In a statement from the city, police chief for the Brooklyn Center Police Department said the following, among other things, "The video in question does not represent the full breadth of community policing by the city of Brooklyn Center officers, nor our community engagement efforts."
Well, uh, did anyone see it?
Yes.
I did. It was on the news. And, uh, at the risk of sounding euphorian. It was over the top.
It's a case of read the room.
Exactly. Read, read your room, read the current environment in Minneapolis. And it was, uh, it, it needed to be watered down quite a bit. It needed a little daylight in it. It needed some black cops and some women cops and some monk cops and some Hispanic cops. It needed, uh, it needed a, uh, its tone needed to be, uh, revised. It was, uh, so I can't, these prematurely gray-haired 42-year-old women who are complaining, uh, they've, they've got a, they've got, uh, ground to stand on here.
But.
So there.
There is crime aplenty.
Right.
In their town.
That's right.
They can say otherwise all they want, uh, but it's, it's a fact. There, there's a lot of crime.
That's right.
In that city. A lot.
Well, that doesn't excuse the nature and tone of the recruitment video.
All right. I'll give you that.
Yeah.
A 64-year-old man convicted of murder has received a 12 and a half year term for speeding through a no passing zone in Moundsville while high on fentanyl and running over a woman doing yard work in front of her home. Donald Harris of Coon Rapids sentenced by Ramsey County District Judge Kelly Olmstead on Monday. She found him guilty in a bench trial of third degree murder, criminal vehicular homicide and illicit drug possession. In the crash from May 25th, 2021, that crash killed 82-year-old Maria Presidio. The credit for the few days he spent in jail after the crash, Harris can expect to serve the first eight and a third years in prison and the balance of his term on supervised release. A woman driving south of Law Lake Road told police she saw an SUV speed past her in the northbound parking lane, hit the woman and flee the scene. A police officer arrived and saw Presidio's body with fresh grass clippings and a broken plastic snow shovel nearby. Defense attorney Seamus Mahoney wrote in his closing argument that Ferris was self-medicating with fentanyl and other drugs to counter years of pain in his lower back from an injury sufferable in the army more than 15 years ago.
So he gets eight years.
Yep.
That's amazing.
One person every 8.5 minutes. 175 people per day. Do what? Fentanyl kills.
In the country?
Lose their life to fentanyl.
Yep.
Several classified documents from President Joe Biden's time as vice president were discovered last fall in a private office. Biden's attorneys acknowledged yesterday. Attorney General Merrick Garland has asked the US Attorney in Chicago to investigate the matter. Congressional Republicans also are taking notice. Biden's lawyers say they found the government materials in November while closing out a Washington DC-based office, the Penn Biden Center for Diplomacy and Global Engagement, that Biden used as part of his relationship with the University of Pennsylvania, where he was an honorary professor from 2017 to 2019. Classified materials included some top secret files with the sensitive compartmented, sensitive compartmented information designation, also known as SCI, which is used for highly sensitive info obtained from intelligence sources. After the discovery, Biden's lawyers immediately contacted the National Archives and Records Administration, which started looking into the matter. Biden's team cooperating with NARA, which later came to view the situation as a mistake due to lack of safeguards for documents. In November, NARA sent a referral to the Justice Department to look into the matter. The US Attorney in Chicago, John Lausch Jr., is investigating. Lausch was one of the Trump era holdovers who was not asked to resign after Biden's inauguration. He was appointed by Trump in 2017 and unanimously confirmed by the Senate. Illinois's two Democratic senators said in 2021, they wanted Lausch to remain at the top post to conclude sensitive investigations. Apparently this investigation, although they didn't reveal at the time what probes he was working on.
Has Trump weighed in on this yet?
Yep. He has, yeah. Yeah. All he said basically was that perhaps all of Biden's many houses should be raided, including the White House. So that's all he had to say.
Okay.
House Republicans on Monday pushing through an overhaul of operating rules for the new Congress, overcoming the concerns of some rank and file members about concessions that Speaker Kevin McCarthy made to the hard right last week in the drawn-out process of securing his job. McCarthy clinched the speaker's gavel early Saturday after those 15 rounds of voting. Uh, all of that came after a series of demands from the ultra-conservative rebels of the party who opposed him, including allowing any single lawmaker to call a snap vote to oust him. In the end, a handful of holdouts dropped their opposition and supported all the measures, putting aside reservations about McCarthy's concessions. Many of those concessions, like allowing the party's right wing a critical block of seats on the panel that decides which bills can be considered on the House floor, were not included in the package that passed yesterday, but instead were approved in a closed-door negotiation with a handshake agreement. The rules did suffer a short hiccup when the Congressional Budget Office estimated Monday that the legislation would cut federal spending by $71 billion. That's the IRS legislation, but would then reduce tax revenue to the tune of almost 186 billion. That effect would be a $114 billion increase in deficits over the next decade. Uh, it actually probably doesn't matter anyway, because none of this would get through the Democratic-controlled Senate. Slashed canvas on a modern masterpiece, graffiti spray painted on statues, a smashed Louis XIV clock. The folks, supporters of far-right former President Jair Bolsonaro, who invaded Brasilia's hubs of power over the weekend, ransacked everything in their path, including priceless works of art. Three vandalized buildings, Presidential Palace, known as the Planalto. The Supreme Court and Congress are themselves considered treasures of modern architecture, designed by Oscar Niemeyer. The futuristic constructions featuring the curbs of the iconic, sorry, Brazilian architect are for anyone who earned the capital. A landmark in the history of urban planning, its classification as a UNESCO World Heritage Site in 1987. You know, thousands of Brazilians who took to the streets, uh, thousands of other Brazilians, I'm sorry, took to the streets yesterday to call for punishment for those who took part in the rioting. As of yesterday, about 1,500 people in custody already, most arrested at the time of the rioting on Sunday.
Matthew, what are these shops that are all over the world where, uh, we drop off our crap? And then they turn around and sell it to the public for little or nothing?
Goodwill.
Good, yeah, Goodwill.
Savers.
Suits, thrift stores. The reason, yeah, thrift stores, the reason I missed Ancient Aliens last night is because I was watching Antiques Roadshow.
Oh, yeah.
And the one thing I've learned from that show is every single one of us should be pouring through these stores every day. Because it's, it's there, you could find a masterpiece and it could be worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. You pay 12 bucks for it.
Or you could find a cheerbox.
If they come back through here, I'm taking in my frog. I've told you about my frog.
The talking one?
Oh, I got a frog. There's a hole in its belly and you stick a hose in there and the water comes out the frog's mouth.
Spits water.
I will give you, I'll give you 35 cents for that right now.
I bet you that thing's worth a million dollars.
Every now and then, when you're watching this show, you get a glimpse of the line. And it's like trying to get into a Who concert in the seventies in Cincinnati. It's, uh, and I think the secret is if you're going to bring something to Antiques Roadshow, make it small and easy to carry.
Well, wouldn't the Antiques Roadshow have a crew that goes through the line and says, okay, you, you, you?
Yeah.
They're not going to interview somebody with a salt shaker.
No, but they're going to pick somebody that really thinks they have something.
Yeah.
And they know it's crap.
I know a gal who got on it with, with some scrimshaw. You know what scrimshaw is?
No, I don't.
It's a whale bone carving.
Carving thing, yeah. You know who I want to meet?
Highland Park.
I've got some posters. I'm going to bring my posters because the gal that rates posters is so unbelievably awesome.
Well, that's the only reason. You're just going to bring up Trading Places, uh, thing poster for 1991?
You know what? Rough-looking Vietnamese.
You look, you look at her and you think, you look at her and you think, I bet she's closed down a bar or two and then gone to an after-party. And, and she just looks like a gal that you could have a lot of fun with.
Oh my goodness.
My favorite was the Vietnam Vet. I think it was North Dakota.
It was North Dakota.
Who showed up with a Rolex he bought in the, in the PX when he was serving. And he never wore it and he kept the receipt, the box, the whole deal. It was worth 750 grand.
Wow.
The guy fainted. He went down. They had to bring medical help. Yeah.
He was, uh, it was in Bonanzaville in West Fargo.
Yeah. Do you recall the, uh, the, I, I went through a bit of strife trying to find out who was responsible for this soundtrack music on the Moon Landing documentary? When the guys were flying to the moon and it was this brilliant song playing underneath the flight itself. And it turned out to be a group called M83.
Right.
Right.
Two French guys who do weird, weird nifty stuff. They're coming to the Palace Theater.
You gonna go?
No, cause I've heard their other stuff and it's not listenable.
Oh.
Can you play that one song?
Just the one song?
The one song. I gotta go.
Set it up when it's a C F P I done.
Hey Metallica, hurry up and play that or Sam and I want to watch the news. Yeah, then I gotta go.
My wife, uh, at, I think it was Goodwill, she was just pouring through the book section and she saw Term Limits, Cloak and Dagger Press, the original.
Really?
She did buy it. I told her, if you ever see that at Goodwill, buy it. So now I have two, but that's a.
You stole mine.
No, I didn't.
I don't have mine.
You have yours.
I don't know where it is.
What book? Uh, Term Limits, but it has to be by Cloak and Dagger Press because they self-published it. Yes. So there's only a limited amount that were sold.
Hold on, am I term limits?
Cloak and Dagger Press. Still can't believe that dude's got it. Yeah, I, I did not sell either one. I still have both of them. What, what about something Vince signed to me with a very awesome, friendly, personal note?
Meaningless.
Yeah. Really?
Did, did he use your name?
Yeah. Yeah, he did.
That's probably not worth it. It's like those books I got from Joe.
But remember, what did Bill Campbell say from Duluth, the collector guy?
I don't know.
If you want it to be worth something, you gotta have the original box. Not on a book, not on a book, but I'm just saying, you're going to have to have, you know, I'm just talking about collector's items.
What Vince wrote to me was so nice and friendly that I'm, I'm, I'd be embarrassed to show you and tell you what it said. It was just, it was so above and beyond.
Believe it.
Yeah. Well, now.
Well, he wasn't a nice guy. I can't find it hard to believe that he wrote something nice.
He was a great guy. I barely knew him and he came and watched the band and put his arm around me and said, I wouldn't miss this for the world.
He's, God, he was so awesome. What a guy.
I have two.
Why is his brother such a jerk?
Brooke, I have two signed originals.
You're a moron.
Podcast listener too. He's so mean, his brother.
I have two signed original Term Limits on Cloak and Dagger, but they're signed by Vince for 200 bucks on, on eBay.
Oh, wow.
But those, those are autographed. So.
Are you done, John?
Well, I got more stories.
Well, what do you got? Let's run through. What do you got? Will go yea or nay?
Well, I gotta do this because this is just like an old school kicker.
Yeah, let's do it.
Hey, an old school kicker.
Hey!
Wisconsin has a new multimillionaire after a $15.1 million lottery ticket was sold in the town of Luck, Wisconsin on Wednesday.
So they won the billion?
No, they won.
No, no. 15 million.
15.1 C, Joe, but the, the kicker part of it is it was in Luck.
Oh, Luck. I get it, John. Yeah.
Her name is Laura Woolley, the lady I was talking about on, uh, yeah, yeah. Well, it's W O O L L E Y. She's the coolest broad I've ever seen on TV.
I can't, I can't place her.
Yeah.
I can't either.
Google her.
Can we, can we take a timeout, please? Come back and wrap this up with some.
Yeah, you're going to want to Google this one.
Screwed up that story for me. Might as well take a break.
Kenny, be a praiser?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a picture of her?
Yeah.
Truth, justice and the Souchere.
Oh, great. Another Sea Foam work story from the loudmouth traffic dummy. Hold up hoopole heads. It's not what you think. It's pretty cool actually. Hi Kenny. My 17-year-old snow blower started acting up this year. The engine ran fine, thanks to Sea Foam, but it was really weak in the blowing department. I tried adjusting the auger belt, but the belt idler would barely move when engaged. As a result, there was no tension in the belt. The auger wouldn't move. Snow wouldn't fly. Apparently the drive belt idler had rusted tight over summer storage. I tried prying it. It wouldn't budge. I grabbed my Sea Foam Deep Creep, gave all moving parts a liberal soaking, let it sit for 15 minutes. By the way, that's how long it takes him to drink a beer. So he let it sit for one beer. It moved a little. So he gave it another dose, had another beer. The arm moved a little more, had another beer. One more dose of Deep Creep and some manual encouragement and viola! The old errands got a workout this last snowfall and performed flawlessly. I was able to blow snow halfway into Joe's yard. Thanks, Sea Foam. Love from Steve in St. Cloud.
Um, you know what Royce would say?
Call the blowing department.
Yep. It's an amazing product. It's an amazing company. They're our very own local company with a worldwide global reach and a true miracle in a world of rusted parts and bad gas, Sea Foam.
I know I mentioned this before, but I'm, uh, committed to always looking up the since when's on climate.
Hysteria.
Hysteria. And you'll be told, uh, on every network news channel you might watch, I do watch them. I haven't successfully weaned myself off them. Life would be better if I could, but a little inconvenient to the show. You'll be told that California is facing devastating floods and rainfalls in atmospheric rivers due to climate change. I, I previously told you about geologic evidence indicates that mega floods occurred in the California region before Christ. And, uh, but I found this one and you might want to keep this one in mind. Uh, it's the exact same time of year when you, uh, you're going to run into euphorians in your life and people from liberal lakes in Diversityville are going to point to what's happening currently in California and say, see? Exactly this time of year in December, 1861 through January, 1862. Beginning on December 24th, 1861 and lasting for 45 days. The largest flood in California's recorded history occurred, reaching full flood stage in different areas between January 9 and 12 in 1862, right exactly where we are today in date. The entire Sacramento and San Joaquin valleys were inundated for an extent of 300 miles, averaging 20 miles in breadth. State government was forced to relocate from the capital in Sacramento for 18 months in San Francisco. The rain created an inland sea in Orange County lasting about three weeks, with water standing four feet deep up to four miles from the river. The Los Angeles basin was flooded from the San Gabriel Mountains to the Palos Verdes Peninsula at variable depths, excluding the higher lands, which became islands until the waters receded. The Los Angeles basin lost 200,000 cattle by way of drowning, as well as homes, ranches, farm crops and vineyards swept away. Now that's just at this time of year in 1861 through January of 1862. I have page after page after page of this. There is nothing new about what's happening in California. This is of little consolation to somebody with a tree on their porch. I understand that. And it's of little consolation to people whose cars have floated away. And God forbid that somebody, some human floats away, but this is what happens in California. It's always been called an atmospheric river. And the difference of course is that now millions and millions and millions of people live in areas where these floods did tremendous damage. They just didn't do tremendous damage to homes and subdivisions. I will, I will let that slide now, but I'm keeping this for my own cocktail party ammunition. Oh yeah? What about 1862? Could you explain that?
And then that's when usually they turn and go, okay.
I told you, I got into an, I, I told you, I, uh.
Yes, you did. Recently, wasn't it?
Recently, uh, oh, the Hurricane Ian in, uh, on the Gulf Coast. And I said, would you explain to me Tampa, Florida, 1890? And I went on through them and, uh, uh, the person, uh, began to pout and fell silent.
Did you get the ribs poked at a little bit?
Oh, yeah. 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 And Stacy, the GL geologist, uh, weighs in, a pretty good shaker in, uh, Pulau Pulau Tanembar, Indonesia, 7.6. Pulau Pulau Tanembar. But so far, uh, nothing has happened. This was yesterday. What's today? The 10th?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is January 9th. 7.6, that ain't nothing to shake a stick at. You know? And finally, because they come to us all the way from, did he leave?
I have no idea.
What is stuffs? But his stuff's still here.
Right.
Maybe he had a center stall emergency.
Call the center stall department. Only because they come to us all the way.
Coke on the floor right there.
It's going to rest comfortably right here.
Oh, God.
Only because they come to us all the way. From Marloth Park in Umfolongas, South Africa, from the traveling Lyman's at Worldwide WFT. It was on this day.
Today is January 10th.
The Arrowhead was selected as the official moniker for northeastern Minnesota, the result of a nationwide contest sponsored by the northeastern Minnesota Civic and Commerce Association of Duluth. I have a question about that.
Okay, go ahead.
Why would you make that a nationwide contest? Who cares what somebody in Florida wanted to call the Arrowhead?
I agree, Joe.
All inclusive.
Why wasn't that just a Minnesota contest?
By golly, you're right.
And gosh dang it. On this day in 1975.
110.
A fierce three day blizzard struck, bringing one to two feet of snow with some drifts reaching 20 feet and winds up to 80 miles an hour, closing most Minnesota roads, stranding a train at Wilmer and killing 35 people and 15,000 head of livestock. The St. Paul Pioneer Press reported that an offshoot of an Arctic storm had blasted into the Midwest commencing that the wind ain't whistlin' Dixie. 1975. I can relate to that.
You can, huh?
Did the Vikings play Pittsburgh in the 1975 Super Bowl following the 74 season?
Uh, true. No way. I don't know. I'm looking at Laura Woolley.
Hang with me.
Yeah, because this is January 10th.
January 12th of 1975.
Okay.
The Pittsburgh Steelers beat the Minnesota Vikings 16 to six.
Okay, whatever that blizzard was, did impact the metro. That was when my deluxe Ford Pinto station wagon was frozen to the garage floor and I had to rocket to bust it free of the concrete floor of the garage to get to the airport and we flew down for the game on the Tribune's airplane.
Wow.
And that storm had a tremendous impact on the metro area in 1975.
Was that the storm where you got a call from the alley?
No, you keep asking me that. That was hockey playoffs in about 82.
Oh.
On this day in 1976.
June 10th.
Nope.
November 10th.
No.
During a heavy snowstorm. 325 cars were damaged in a pileup on a Minneapolis freeway. Boy, that isn't much of a day in history, is it?
What, what year was that?
1976, the year following the 75 blizzard. 1976. We don't get the name of the freeway. This is a worthless this day in history item.
Well, and I've been looking because I was curious about it and there's nothing online to indicate where it was.
That's not the traveling Lyman's fault. That's just the just day in history people. Uh, that's, that's a non factor. You provided no information.
It was, it was northbound 35W at Lake Street. Stop being so stupid.
You lying.
He's just making that up.
Yeah, of course he is.
It was inbound 394 at Penn.
Or.
Where were you?
I went up to say goodbye to Jim Barnum.
Oh.
We're still doing the show.
But never mind that we do the show.
Did Jim retire or?
Uh, Jim, it's his last, it's his last day today.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And I have a two o'clock meeting at the airport, so I have to go. I have to go, but don't forget to go up, go up and say goodbye to him. He's a good guy.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
You know, John, you'll be happy to know that the Super Bowl that we were referring to, the Vikings became the first team to ever lose back to back Super Bowls.
Huh? The Vikings have lost Super Bowls?
Yeah. Is it going to be, seriously? Is it going to be Buffalo versus the Vikes?
No.
You don't think so?
No, it's be Jacksonville versus the Vikes.
As long as we're in it, it's all I care.
Well.
The Vikings will be lucky to win.
You guys are all laughing. Jacksonville is going to win the Super Bowl.
You think so?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, bros.
The Sean Moran will have something to say about that.
Whoops.
That guy that owns them.
Shad Khan is the owner of the Jacksonville Jaguars. GLers, do us a favor. Once you get through this episode, please subscribe to the Garage Logic YouTube channel because there we are posting daily content for your amusement. You can follow us along on all of our social media channels, which includes Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. And yeah, if you haven't done so, hey, become a member of the Town Council. That's right. For 10 bucks a month or $100 a year, you, yes, you can join the thousands of members of the Garage Logic Town Council. It is time once again to check in with our guy, Mr. Money Talk, Josh Arnold is with us once again here in the brand new year and now's the time for you to do the same. So pick up the phone and make that call for that free 48 minute financial consultation by doing just what I did. Pick up that phone and dial 952-925-5608. That number once again is 952-925-5608. You call that number and you get Josh and you're always going to get straight talk. You're never going to get sugar coated advice. And Josh is on the line with us once again here in Garage Logic. And boy, Josh, a brand new year, but it still is all about the Fed, isn't it?
Unfortunately, and I do have to say unfortunately, it's still about the Fed, Chris, as market watchers continue to take apart any speech by any Fed governor, whether it's the Fed chief Jay Powell, who was speaking overseas today, saying that there's a need for Fed political independence because the Fed is going to have to make very difficult policy decisions. And quite frankly, he said, one of the things that the politicians have been pushing the Fed to do is deal with climate change. I do not know how, quite frankly, that dealing with interest rate and monetary policy, including trying for price stability and full employment has anything to do with the Fed dealing with climate change. I believe that's a scientist, but not to the Fed. The Fed Powell additionally pointed out that achieving price stability is more what the Fed is about in his speech. And right now that would entail continuing their tight money policy and continuing to raise interest rates to stifle inflation. Said Governor Bostic in another speech, that he sees the Fed raising rate over 5% and having those rates stay there. That's on the short term. And another Fed governor said the Fed should slow down their rate of increases, but still maintain their tight policy until they see inflation broken. I don't know about the Fed governors. I do not know what data that they are looking at, but to me, the data that I see is that inflation numbers, particularly with commodity prices coming down, particularly with rents leveling off, particularly with housing prices leveling off and even coming down, particularly with housing starts coming down, mortgage applications coming down. To me, it would seem that the Fed has achieved its role, yet the Fed is now focused on employment and wages and seems to believe that fewer people working at lower wages would be a positive for reducing inflation. My goodness, it wasn't more than a year ago that the Fed and others were pushing for higher wages. Oh, that's inflationary, particularly higher minimum wages and wanting more people to go to work. It becomes insanity in my estimation for anybody to talk about wanting higher unemployment. Yet I do know that companies, whether it be in the technology sector, industrial sector or other sectors of the economy have been pushed by boards of directors, by outside activists to reduce their headcount because they believe that there are too many people working and not as productive as they might be. So we have seen layoffs again across the board, whether it be at Microsoft, Google, Facebook or Meta, Amazon, Goldman Sachs, among others, that have been laying off employees in an effort to streamline their businesses or because businesses has slowed down. Now, all of that said, while last year was extremely difficult and last year was very frustrating for me, particularly with one of the companies that I own and recommend, Amazon in particular, I am optimistic for this year, but realistic as well. I do believe that market volatility will continue, particularly around the Fed. And we do start, if they said, and any statistics relating to employment. So this week we have a CPI report, which, you know, could affect the markets. And Friday we start earnings in earnest with bank numbers starting to come out. Next week we'll hear a little bit from technology companies and some of the semiconductor names, but it won't be until the end of the month and into the beginning of February that we'll hear from my favorite names, Apple and Amazon. Apple has been struggling of late in terms of the stock price. I am still a buyer and I still hold my long-term price target of $250. Numerous analysts have cut their numbers based on some short-term issues that Apple itself has acknowledged in their last earnings reports, including supply chain issues and manufacturing issues in China because of China's COVID policy. That said, things have been changing recently with changes in China's COVID policy. Apple's main manufacturing plant is back at least at 90% production levels. Uh, Apple has also enlisted another company to fill the void of high-end phones and Apple has also been moving production outside of China into Vietnam and now to India. And I did see a report that India has exported about $4 billion worth iPhone, iPhones abroad. India could be a very strong market over the next several years for Apple. This year, I still maintain my focus on companies involved in the internet, leisure-related businesses, China-related businesses, which I, with China opening up again, that could be strong and real assets, including real estate and doing some short-term trading. At the same time, maintaining up to a 30% cash position, both for safety and to take advantage of opportunities as they arrive from the inevitable market volatility.
Excellent advice, Mr. Money Talk. You heard him, GLers. Now's the time for you to pick up that phone and make that call for that free 48 minute